Lighting.
Oh dear, recorded.
No.
Well, good luck. Good luck with everything.
Oh, Steve's here. He's an attendee. Steven Julie.
Baby, I'm at my meeting. Hey, I'm at the meeting. Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Am I, am I current? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Are you there? Here. I'll wait till my wife gets, can you hear that in the background? What was that? My wife making a smoothie that somehow needs to blend for 10 minutes.
So there was one.
In it. All right. Good morning, everybody. Happy day after Fourth of July. Some good news. We didn't burn the bad town down. Some bad news. We didn't have fireworks. They go hand in hand. So yeah, who wants to be liable for that decision, huh? So. Welcome, everybody. I've got an agenda here if I can find it lying somewhere. I do not necessarily have a. Report, so we'll move right into what do we have here?
I think FFRP is up.
Yep.
All right, FFRP, let's go.
Yeah, and since I have been, hi, everybody, out of town, I have a very brief report. Weeding keeps going on on Wednesdays, every Wednesday. July 16th, we've organized a work party to go water the seedlings. So there'll be another watering. This is about, we're entering the driest time of the year. We have, we're going to move. The, the restoration nursery has been conducted. I can't remember if I recorded that last time. And we're going to move the existing tree seedlings into it this week. So they'll all be together and cared for until fall when we can plant them. And in my absence, our illustrious leader, John Nixon, has led the leash movement, which is, has been remarkably conflict-free.
Yeah.
Encouraging people to use leashes on the ranch. And I have to say, that was not the smallest, best part of my vacation, that it happened while I was out of town. So that was great. So that's, that's my report. Happy to answer questions.
It's really nice that it's been rather calm about the dog leash thing. Maybe people were finally ready for it.
Or they're not on next door.
Well, it takes about a month to get rid of a dog bite, I found out.
You got, did you get bit recently?
In my neighborhood, I, I generally took our dogs for a walk up to a couple of miles. And we went to a regular neighborhood we always go through, but there was a stray dog there. And before I knew it, it was attacking us.
Already heard that.
A leash. It bit both my thumbs. So it's taken about a little over a month, month and a half.
Are your dogs okay?
Dogs are fine. It turns out, well, the reason I got bit, as I was trying to attack our small dog and the big dog trying to, to really, really do damage. And then the process, of course, I was holding one dog, trying to hold them so that it could not get to it, till the owner showed up. And the owner showed up, she pulled the dog off and actually laid on top of that dog, so it'd be away. And if you do get bit by a dog and you go to a doctor, they're required by law to report a dog bite.
Was the, did the dog have rabies shots?
That's what, apparently that dog was up to date, although we did have to stay quarantined myself and the dogs for, for 10 days. They sent the. The people who. Take care of dogs. And they put us on a 10-day observation, basically. And after 10 days of nothing was happening, and they basically released us. So. It's not fun.
All right. Thank you for all of that. Moving on, we're going to the skate park. Julie.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Excellent. Well, happy, what was the Fourth of July? And what a great day in the park it was. You will see a formal press release coming out from the American Legion very shortly on what took place for the fireworks last night. I'm so happy to see Stan Cooper this morning. Yay, it's great to see you. All right, update on the skate park. Last time we met with Ray was when Steve and I met with Ray. So I have not met with him since. I just do know that Monte and Ray are doing what they're supposed to be doing. And that is working with the county. We are hoping, of course, to have an understanding of final engineering numbers, how to hurdle those exemptions. Right around, I'm being told, October. So let's just call it September, October. My hope is to circle back with Ray sometime this week. Wanted to kind of give him some breathing room. But I'm very happy to report, we've reached a half million dollars in fundraising effort. Thank you. Of course, I always like to say that that number does include, and we're very grateful for the $178,000 commitment that came from CCSD. That is part of that number, to be clear. But the rest of it has been raised on. Love and love from this community, love from donors, not just in this community. I think I mentioned at the last meeting that we got a $50,000 anonymous donation from Paso Robles. We've identified that donor. But. At this point, continues to want to remain anonymous. But we're going to call it $501,000. And there is a $10,000 perk on the table right now. And I think you guys all know me well enough to know, I will not leave money on the table. That's coming from the Lions Club. They've already given us 10. I've mentioned that. They've said if another 10 comes forward from another nonprofit in this community, they'll give us another 10. So that's going to happen because I already know of the other nonprofit. I also want to say thank you to Kitty for that lead in regards to. Well, guidestart.org on the Heinz Foundation. So I'm working on it. I'll be honest, I'm a little behind Kitty only because you know, there's only so much bandwidth. But it's on my list and I take every single one of those leads seriously. We continue to rally. The kids are out of school, so you're going to see them out there now on Fridays. Harry was out there holding a sign on Friday. So, Harry, thank you for that. So we just continue to move forward. I'm here to answer any questions, always in regards to the project. Carlos, thank you. And the continued support from Ray. We appreciate it very much. Joyce, do you have a question?
Yeah, what was happening in October?
Well, in October, we hope to have what we need back in reports from the county.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions that I can answer in regards to the project? We will be part of Pine Dorado. That's our next fundraising event. We have a float going into the parade, of course. And we're working collectively with boosters and PTA and CYAA to put all the kids together in the floats that line up. So that way our community can't go, where are the kids? Are there kids in this community? So our plan of attack on this is to get them concentrated so that you can definitely see there are children in this community. But Skate Cambria will be very proud in the parade for Pine Dorado weekend and participating. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Julie.
My pleasure.
And if any of you don't know, it was Julie in the otter costume yesterday, parading around the park. That was a good one.
Thank you.
It's a worm in there.
It was, it was like a really good weight loss program. Yeah.
If you need to lose weight, put that otter costume on, run around a little bit.
Hey, Steve, I want to add in, I'm just going to give a shout out to Sarah, who does the face painting. And we were able to help step in with boosters and PTA to help her paint. We painted over 200 faces. And it was such a joy to just put the artwork on these cute little cheeks and, and see our community. Live and have, you know, such a great opportunity to be together yesterday. It was beautiful to see our community out there. So, thank you.
Right on. Thank you, Julie. It was a good day at the park. Anybody else got questions for Julie? Great. Seeing none, we're going to move on. All right. Anybody from the public have something to say about something that's not on the agenda? I only see Beth in the audience, so I'm assuming not because she's got a presentation. So we're going to move on and that takes us to Beth Udevan's Cambria for Aquatics update. And before she gets going, I'm going to go ahead and, and tell you this because it's a presentation and not an action item. Because the Board of Directors are, well. Dawn Howell, the President of the Board of Directors, would prefer us not to issue. Recommendations or endorsements as a board. That's the job and responsibility of the CCSD Board and not the Pro's Commission. We can endorse something as individuals, but not as a group. Now, that's a fine piece of work there that we could all wrap our brains around and talk about because I'm not so sure I understand that completely. That being said, we're going to take Beth's update and then we'll discuss it after that, if that's okay with everybody. Jim, you good with that? All right, Beth, here we go. I think I'm going to promote Beth to a panelist so that we can see your lovely face. Does that make sense?
That would help.
Okay. She should be popping up any second.
Okay, am I here?
Perfect.
Oh, there I am. Okay. Thank you, Steve, for like letting me be visible for a, for a chance. Steve told me within the last month that the Pro's Commission cannot endorse the swimming pool project as, as a commission, as a subcommittee of the CCSD. So. Last month, I gave you a real brief presentation that we are now actively seeking a venue at the high school. For a swimming pool facility. It will be year-round, enclosed, heated, secure. 25-meter-six-lane pool. That will be a community pool. And it will be organized by a nonprofit. Corporation, Cambrians for Aquatics. And at this point, we are going to make our formal presentation to the school board on September 8th. We're going to present them with a memorandum of understanding that they will peruse and hopefully accept outlining the project, the project. And. We're working with Scott Smith, who is the current Superintendent of Schools. He's very excited about this project. He actually. Found the spot that we are currently looking at, which is. Immediately adjacent to the Leffingwell High School property, right beside their building, between their last building and the football. Stadium, behind the scoreboard. There's a nice, big, wide area there that is not used. It's irrigated. It's green. And it's right by the parking lot. Leffingwell High School has a sewer system, so we can hook into their sewer system. And we are thinking of using the well water from the high school. They. They are currently using that well water for irrigation and it is treatable. And we are looking at the county right now at what. What we need to treat it with to make it good for the swimming pool. So anyway, that being said, you cannot endorse it as a Pro's Commission, but we certainly would like. Support from members to take to the high school meeting on September 8th. We're looking for letters of support from our community for this pool. So that's my presentation, Steve, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Beth. Does anybody have any questions for Beth?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. The CCSD has nothing, there's no need for them to endorse or unendorse or anything. It's, this is a private party doing.
Right.
Putting a pool at the right place, so.
Right, right. No.
I can't see anybody getting in the way of it. It sounds perfect.
Thank you. Thank you.
Stan?
My question is, do you foresee a, a shared use with the public schools so that there are swimming classes for?
Absolutely, absolutely. And actually, the thought right now is making it part of the PE program. And having the kids during the school day, their PE class, come and get swim lessons for one, for one idea. But I believe every child is a swimmer. Every child is a swimmer.
Will it be large enough for water polo?
Um, it's a 25-meter-six-lane pool. And it will be deep enough, but I don't know that water polo would work.
Any other questions, Adolf?
I guess we'll get updates at some point in time as another presentation or whatever.
Oh, sure, sure. Um, we would like anybody to send us a letter to cambriansforaquatics.org. Endorsing and supporting this project with the school before September 8th. So we can take any, any support that we have to the school board and present that to them. And then after September 8th, we'll find out what we need to do from them. Yep.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Other question, Harry?
Yes, Steve, thank you so much. Beth, thank you for your, your reports last, last month and today. Very much appreciated. Especially for those of us that can remember swimming at the pool at. Oh, Cambria Pines Lodge many years ago.
Yeah.
Really miss that.
Yeah.
But what I, what I wanted to ask you, and I don't know if this is necessarily relevant, or if you feel comfortable with answering. But who are the people that are mainly behind this particular project and having it move forward? Are you at liberty to, to, to discuss that at all?
The members on my committee, my executive board? Is that what you're asking?
I think so.
Okay, the executive board is, well, let's see, John Lynn. Dave Griffith, Dr. Dave, Tom Gray. Stephen Peck. Barbara Bronson Gray. Mary Meyer. Carrie Cox. I think that's about it.
All right.
That's the executive committee.
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Sure.
Any other questions for Beth? Seeing none. And nobody wants to touch the endorsement issue. We're all comfortable with that. Jim, what do you feel like that? I'm curious. You and Harry think about that. One is a current board member and one is a past board member.
I, I, I think it has nothing to do with pros, has nothing to do with the CCSD. This is an independent group going to the high school. And it, you know, I, if you were a. As a person and as a board, I would think that at least this is a private company going, or a private corporation that's trying to provide additional services that. We don't have to, we don't have to worry about. So it's kind of a, of a. Of a good thing that Parks, Recreation and Open Space over a period of time isn't going to be challenged with it, so.
Yeah, that's why I endorse it. Yeah, yeah.
And we're going.
I endorse everything I don't have to do.
Yeah, we're asking for letters of support from the Rotary Club, the Lions Club, the PTA. All of the local organizations, so.
Perfect. I guess, great, Beth, I guess the question is beyond you because now we're going to hear a presentation from Kermit and we're not going to endorse his thing either because that also isn't. On our property or costing us money, but I endorse his ideas too. So. Beth, I appreciate you coming and we look forward to hearing from you again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us into Kermit. Kermit, how about a presentation from you?
The project is stalled waiting for words to come from the person who might know who the sponsor is and. There is a definite lull in the activities until we, we can get that. So it's just hanging in there. Not dead, not moving. So stay tuned, I would say. But I would also, you know, be waiting as a. Board member for us to discuss, you know, are we ever going to have a plan for trails and so forth and. Pro's act indoor, a pros outdoor recreation plan to replace the one from 1992. Or update the one from 1992. That would be my only question as to what. Right now, it has nothing to do with our project. That has just my concerns of, we've discussed it and it's not on the agenda. And I think it may be worth putting on for the agenda next month. Because there's no, obviously no speed in this, but it should be something we be, we start to look at as to. The overall document for what we're, we're sort of thinking of for the community. Because this trail would work in with that.
Jim?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that we couldn't be a sponsor. CCSD does not have land use authority. But if this trail is going to go on the ranch, off the ranch, down the highway. For, and one of the responsibilities that the CCSD has been given is Parks, Recreation and Open Space. Just because some of the open space happens to be a road. In town, we can't patrol it. We can't. Or I would say the CCSD would not stripe it, but they could play a key, a key member as for the plan on what is going to be striped or what is going to be allowed. It's, you know, we have fire department. We have. You know, other things, street lights. So why couldn't we be the lead so that we at least get things going with a plan? That's all I thought. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else? All right, Kermit, we'll put it back on to the agenda next month to get it going and keep talking about it.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. All right. Where does that take us? I'm assuming it takes us into the minutes. Boom, where are we at? Did I miss the minutes? Uh-oh. I don't see minutes on there. Was that my bad?
Yeah.
It's not on there, is it? All right. So here's, for next month, we'll approve minutes from both the. June and July meetings, if we can handle that. Does that sound good, Carlos?
Got a question from Harry.
Oh, sorry, Harry, go ahead.
Yeah, Steve, if I'm not mistaken, the minutes from June are in the agenda packet for today's meeting. And you also skipped over the report from Carlos. Item number five.
Yes, I did. But I do not see minutes, do I?
Yeah, the minutes are item number six. Consent to jump.
There it is. Sorry, mind that. All right. Okay, Carlos, let's hear from Carlos. Tell us something interesting, my friend.
Yeah, good morning, everybody. Good to see you all. I'll keep my presentation short. I don't have any pictures this, this month, so I'll just do a verbal report, just three items. That might be of interest to the commission. One of those items has to do with the Berry Trail. I'm not sure if everybody knows where the Berry Trail is, but it's on the east part of the Fiskalina Ranch. It's between Pine Way and Rodeo Grounds Road. It's sort of a multi-used trail, about 200 feet, 250 feet long. In the last couple of months, we've received several calls from the neighbors noticing off-road vehicles, four-by-four vehicles going up and down that trail. We were able to speak to a few of the neighbors and they confirmed that there was about two different types or two different vehicles that were utilizing that trail. Obviously, a dangerous situation for the folks that are walking or riding the trail, as well as for the driver who is trying to get some brush out of it and go up and down that trail that is narrow, steep. So it, it sort of. Came up to the top of our list to try to remedy that issue. So we were able to install a split rail fence at the top on the Pine Way side. Cleaned up the trailhead there. And it looks, looks really good. So we're hoping that that issue got resolved. If not, we were able to. Improve the trailhead there with, with a nice fence and some cleanup there. The other big item that we're working on is weed abatement. So we have finalized the fire breaks on the Fiskalina Ranch and we are. Finalizing the last CCSD owned lots that are on the weed abatement list. The deadline for weed abatement is July 14th, so we should be able to meet that deadline. You know, fairly easy now with just a couple of lots left on the list. The last item I just wanted to touch base is the vet's hall. So I reported in the past months. That we have an issue with termites at the vet's hall, fairly significant. We had two. Companies come out and provide us an assessment on it and they both confirmed that we needed to fumigate the entire building to eliminate the termite issue. Happy to report that our board has approved funding for that and we're hoping that we can get that done here in the next couple of months. The estimates that we received for that work were $35,000. One of the termite companies that came out and did the assessment sort of gave us. A little bit of a heads up to make sure that the treatment was successful and that was to do it during the warm months of the year when the termites are more active. So we're trying to get this done within the next three months or so. So I'll be working and getting bids updated, working on contracts and scheduling the work with around the Legion and any vet's hall events that we have. That's my report and I'm happy to answer any questions. I do have one item that I'll talk to as far as future agenda items. That's sort of a direction from our board to the Pro's Commission, but I'm happy to answer any questions on my report or anything else we have.
Thank you, Carlos. The four-by-four that was going up and down the Berry Trail, like a truck or like a. You know, a Ranger, I don't know, like those farm vehicles.
Yeah, so the report was sort of a Jeep four-by-four vehicle that was going up and down.
Adolf?
Just, just curious, I'm trying to think in my mind where this trail is. Is, is it off to, closer to the. Burton Drive there? Or is it closer to the area when you go up toward. To the top of the hill there? So it's right, the trailhead's right at the entrance of the public parking lot. Right between the parking lot and the Burton intersection.
Of Rodeo Drive.
There's a big walnut tree there. And a plum tree across the street. And then all my berries are there too. I kind of wanted to lay claim to the blackberry patch on that road and ask people to stay away from that and quit picking my berries. Thank you. I see you, Stan. I understand. You don't know the Berry Trail, you need to use the Berry Trail. It's an awesome trail. It's a lot shorter than the stairs. Harry?
I was just going to comment on that, Steve. I was really very fortunate. I don't recall how I discovered that particular trail shortly after I moved here like thirty-five years ago. And it's a great, I wouldn't call it necessarily a shortcut, but you're, you're more in nature. It's quiet, it's easier to traverse, let's say, than, than the stairs going up and down. And I don't know, you just kind of, you, you, well, it's just a good feeling walking on a dirt trail. That's all I can say.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Carlos. Anybody else for Carlos?
It's kind of a good shortcut going into town.
And it's a great overlook for the park. You really get to see the whole park laid out there in front of you, so. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate all that. Let's go to the consent agenda item. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion, approve minutes.
Boom, Kermit says he likes the minutes. Do I have a second? Stan says he likes them too, all in favor. Julie doesn't like the minutes.
No, sorry, I have a correction in the minutes, if you don't mind.
All right, Julie's reading the minutes. What do you got?
Thank you. So it was referenced in there that I stated that by this next meeting, we would have raised six hundred and fifty thousand. I think what I was making reference to is that we're working towards the six hundred and fifty thousand. So I just, I'd like that corrected.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thanks, Joyce.
Right on.
That's six fifty, of course, is the number that we've been peddling towards. We all know.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to get to.
Yes, but I never want to overstate where we are because it's important to keep momentum with this campaign. So, thank you.
All right, so now do I have a mo, do I have an approval of those minutes by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, everybody's in favor. Beautiful. Okay, any other thing that somebody has something to say about future, past, present? Everybody comfortable, right on. Kitty, Carlos, you guys keep up.
Just the plan, that'd be a good place for the plan.
What's that, Kermit?
It'd be a good place for our open space plan.
Good. All right.
Hey, Steve, so I'm not sure, are we at future agenda items or?
Yeah, yeah, what do you got?
Okay. So our board has given the Pro's Commission some guidance in regards to one item that they'd like the Pro's Commission to look at. It's also part of our strategic goal plan for Parks and Rec and Facilities and Resources that we had last week on Tuesday. And that is the, the board would like the Pro's Commission to look at the community park plan amenities to sort of give the board, the Pro's Commission recommendation of one, two, three on their list of amenities. So you would be looking at what's left at the community park to do, sports fields, playgrounds, trail system, picnic areas, anything along those lines, finishing the phase one portion of the, the park, adding amenities to the dog park, all those things. So as a future agenda item, we can look at that. I would suggest that maybe at the next month's Pro's meeting that the commission maybe appoint two commissioners and I would work with those commissioners to look at those items and then bring back to the Pro's Commission some recommendations for the Pro's Commission to, to look at. So that's sort of a long-winded explanation of what the, the board is looking at the commission to do.
Adolf?
Just a question, where does the restroom situation stand? So I spoke to our engineer, Radiant, so he's looking at the same sort of timeframe as the skate park for final comments from the county. So at this point, the county, county has asked the CSD to do a soils report and Monte and Ray are working on that currently.
Jim?
Yeah, if we were if we were to look at the amenities that we're thinking about doing, if it was, if the board would allow us to once we have a short list to have a public meeting. So it's just not two or five people here determining the priorities. I think the public should be involved in that a little bit. Prior to going to the public where the CCSD, if they wanted to spend some money and they had priorities, you know, the public should be able to have input there too, just the thought.
Yeah, no, great point. Anybody else? Before I open my can of worms, so my first question right off the bat is why are they doing this? What is it that they want to know that they don't know? Do they have a whole bunch of money they want to spend on something? Great, let's get on it, but I just am like so they're going to ask us where they want the picnic benches? I'm just like, it seems like the cart before the horse. Can someone answer me that? Harry, you got an answer for me?
So, so I think we can, I think we can have that discussion at the next Pro's Commission because obviously the, the item is not agendaized for us to have a discussion.
Oh, gotcha. Right on. Perfect. Thank you. Kitty?
And another future agenda item, I'd like to do an update on the linking boardwalk between the Bluff Trail and the Marine Terrace Trail.
Okay. The Bluff Trail and the Marine
Terrace. The Fire Road.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
For locals, it's the Fire Road. On the map, it's the Marine Terrace Trail.
Perfect. All right, so let's get that on the agenda and we're going to get Carlos's or the, the board's direction to us and we'll work on that. But I like Jim's idea of, of getting some more people involved. So, all right, anybody else? All right, we have been given the command to move forward and we'll do that. Anybody else and not, we're going to say goodbye adjourned. Awesome. Happy for it.
Adios.
Adios.